I haven't met necessarily some of the pals. And then my siblings, I haven't met her siblings, so we're just doing all that.
How many? Does she have two?
She has three boys.
Ever gone to that one?
Two girls. You're all the same age.
All the ones.
Some of them are exactly the same age, yeah.
Forty-some all the time.
Like, her son and my daughter are a month apart. Our other kids are like two months apart.
Oh, and we are presentation.
Kind of cool.
Yeah.
She works out.
She's a medical interpreter.
Everybody ready?
Spanish.
Somebody set the go, wasn't it?
Yep.
Call the order, the regular common council meeting, Monday, May 1st, 7:01 PM. Roll call.
Frye? McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Here.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Next item is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, in its well, with liberty and justice for
Confirmation appropriate, meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, April 28th. Agenda is posted at the post office, library, and city hall.
Council acceptance of agenda?
Motion to accept.
Second.
The discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, carried. Personal appearances, we'll start with Megan Farrell and the Healthy Edgerton Coalition. And if you want to use the hold in there, we've got the computer up there for you.
And guests, yeah.
And guests and guests.
Thank you, everyone, for having me. I apologize that she is with me. My daycare sort of fell through, so hopefully she'll be good for this little presentation. I know most of your faces, but some of your faces are new to me. My name's Megan Farrell. I'm the director of Healthy Edgerton. And tonight, I'm sort of just going to give you an update on what the coalition is doing, what we are, what we're about, and tell you some of the things that we accomplished in our year seven of our grant. So, the coalition's mission is to raise awareness, educate, and support positive youth development through community mobilization, youth engagement, and policy change. The coalition is funded through a drug for communities grant, and so that is a federal grant, and it's $125,000 a year for a five-year cycle, and you're allowed to have that grant twice. So, once you reach 10 years, you're not allowed to reapply for the grant again. Right now, we are in year eight and a half, so we are nearing the end of the grant. All those little circles up there, that's how the federal government says a fully functioning coalition would look like, you would have representation from all 12 of those sectors. And then off to the right, that little flower, we call it the strategic prevention framework, that's just sort of how we, it's an evidence-based scientifically proven way to sort of judge what you're, the approach that you take for prevention work, so. We use logic models to guide our work. The two logic models that we have right now are on underage drinking and prescription drugs, which is on the next slide. So, how these logic models work, we use these as a frame of reference for the action when we're developing our action plan for deciding what we're going to do. So, the first column just says what the problem is, underage drinking. The next column says why is it a problem, community norms favorable towards use. And then the last, the last three squares there is where the communities really make it local to their community themselves. So, I'll just say Evansville, for example, has the same exact grant, but their three things in that right-hand column might look completely different than what ours look like in Edgerton. So, these logic models that I'm showing you are from 2014, so they are definitely outdated and need to be updated. Last Saturday, we met with a group of people to update all of our logic models and start to develop some new ones. So, we're excited to sort of progress forward and relook at the data, that I'll get into a little bit more in the next few slides. But this is our prescription drug logic model, and I just wanted to show you guys these to help you understand how we, how we function. These are the seven strategies that we follow when we do things. So, we have those local conditions that were specific to Edgerton about why it's a problem here, and then for each one of those, we develop a strategy from each of these seven sections to address. So, science has proven that just providing information to somebody or just giving somebody a consequence, it's not effective. Having sort of the whole range of things all at once is how you make sort of prevention work in your favor. So, doing all seven of these strategies at once is the ideal goal. These are our accomplishments, just a few things that we pulled out from our year seven. We got a new evaluator, and they're helping us just find a new way to really tell our story. So, this slide highlights, the graph on the side shows the number of people that our services reached, broken down by each specific drug category. And then on the left are just some of the specific services that we provide to the community just in year seven of our grant. So, we have prescription drug lock boxes that we give out to anybody that wants them. We hold a prescription drug take-back day with the police department. We host a biannual reality maze, and we do presentations to school staff and students. Some of our major accomplishments in year seven, we're getting that, most of you are familiar with getting that social host ordinance passed. We've had, I'm sure you guys are aware of the minor hiccups that have happened with that from the state, from the statewide sense, but it's still an accomplishment nonetheless that we have that, that we had that passed. Cameras were placed in the police evidence room to help them make sure that their meds were being secured for those prescription drug take-back days, making sure that there was a good path they could follow for those nuts. Successful media campaign about prescription drug abuse, and those lock boxes given out to the community again. Here is some data just that sort of tells the story about what our youth are doing as far as use rates, this is just for alcohol. So, the grant originally formed back in 2006 because they saw that those high school alcohol use rates were so high. So, that says 58% in 2007, 58% of Edgerton High School students reported underage drinking. That number was higher than the county average, and what, we were the highest among any school district within Rock County. So, that's why Edgerton was picked first, to sort of get a drug-free community grant, and since we've been awarded one, Evansville, Lloyd, and Janesville all have drug-free community grants as well in their community. But you can see that the data trend is definitely going down for underage alcohol use. That's a pretty, that's something that we're fairly excited about. Yes, I see that. And same with binge drinking rates are going down, we're at 13% in the 2015-16 school year. But even though we're excited about those numbers, there are still other things that are happening. So, I just pulled out a few data points from the most recent Utherus Behavior Survey to highlight for you guys. 14% of the high school students reported using e-cigarettes or vapor pens. We don't have anything to compare that to because that's obviously a new substance, but it's definitely on the rise. 54% of our high school students said that they saw no risk or only a slight risk in smoking marijuana twice a week. 23% of our high school students reported smoking marijuana in the past 30 days, and 8% of the middle school students reported drinking alcohol in the past 30 days. So, definitely some different numbers for us to look at, and that's why we went and we relooked at our logic models, and we'll be working on some new things in the next Needs and next steps, we need to reevaluate the data, which we did last Saturday. So, once we get those new logic models, I'll be excited to roll that out and show some people. But the coalition definitely needs some representation from other sectors and other community change makers. So, if anybody has a desire to join the coalition, we are switching to daytime meetings, and that's how we're going to be the most effective in our work. We have, we only have the money for two more years, and once that money's gone, it's gone. So, I think it would be great to make the most use of the money while we have it, and to be really effective, we definitely need representation from all sectors. So, I'm definitely here to just put it out there, if you have an interest in joining and becoming involved, please reach out to me and let me know. And I didn't bring any of my cards, but there, people know how to get ahold of me. That is all that I have for you guys, I think.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody does want to get ahold of Megan, I do have contact information for her, if there's anybody here that wants to get involved.
Thank you, everyone.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from April 17th.
Motion to approve the April 17th meeting minutes.
I second.
Did you hear a second?
Second.
I thought I did. This here doesn't hear very good. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, carried. And then approval of the April 18th reorganization meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Couple seconds, so, any corrections or additions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, carried. On to finance committee.
A motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $101,161.56.
Second. Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve an application for a Class B combination license at 520 North Main Street to Last Night Bar and Grill LLC. Terry Noticeded, agent contingent on current license holder, giving up his license.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a public event packet for the Edgerton Lions Club Dash Against Diabetes and waive the fees.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a public event packet for Edgerton Teen Center's Fourth Annual Gravity Racers Classic and waive the fees.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a public event packet for the Fishing Derby and waive the fees.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a public event packet for the National Night Out and waive the fees.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a bid for the High Street project to Nelson Escavating in the amount of $86,956.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of an X-Mark lawnmower in the amount not to exceed $9,040.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the sale of a surplus street sweep in the amount of $10,250.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have for finance.
All the person Olson has to leave at this moment, so we'll excuse her. Fire District.
Yes, due to my limited availability of speaking, Chief Pickering said that he would provide the update from the last Fire District meeting. Is that okay?
I suppose.
Okay, good.
A couple miscellaneous things, and then a couple of really good news things to share with you. Overall, the district's activity is up about 13% year over year, so additionally, train horns, if you're hearing more sirens, you'll know why, and we've got the summer yet, so we're looking forward to that. At the district board meeting last week, four things to kind of share with you. The district received its preliminary audit from Seabird, our auditors, and a couple of final things that have to be provided for them to get a set of final audits, so that will probably come before the board at their May meeting, and I know, since I talked about giving you the information you need for what the city needs. The district's personnel handbook, employee handbook, was approved at the April meeting. That's an effort that's been underway for about a year now. I kind of think everybody was extremely happy. In fact, it was dedicated to Nancy Dickinson, who served the district for many, many, many years, both the district and the communities, for many, many years. So, that was approved and is in effect. Two business items, the district approved moving forward with the replacement of our oldest ambulance with a new ambulance. It's about a nine-month build cycle on that, so we've got to try to keep two current ones working over that period of time. The Volunteer Association stepped forward and made, I would say, a very generous donation, and we generally appreciate it. If you saw the Janesville Gazette yesterday, you may have seen an article from the City of Janesville Fire Department on what's called a power loading system. One of the biggest challenges in the emergency service is back injuries to EMTs, and that comes from trying to actually lift the stretcher up and into the back of the ambulance. And a couple of men in a company called Stryker, who makes our current ambulance cots, has come up with a system that actually does that loading so that it takes the stress off the EMTs actually having to do the loading and unloading. That was about a $25,000 system, and the Volunteer Association thought that that was something that really was looking out for the health and well-being of those people who are volunteering for our communities, AKA our members. So, Volunteer Association stepped up and made a $25,000 donation so that we can, the new ambulance will have the power load system on it.
It also was on the news the other night.
Yeah, I heard about it on the news.
But they showed some with ramps too. This does not have the ramps.
So, the power load system has a capacity of 700 pounds, and if you can live in that occasionally, there are some patients that exceed that, and so, yeah, there's that which you then adaptation, that's a winch and ramps and a winch, so that's above and beyond. Janesville does have two of those ambulances available to us, and I will tell you, we actually used one of those on a mutual aid basis about a week ago because we had a situation with an extremely large patient. So, yeah, so the power load system, it's getting a lot of attention. The other thing that will not get a lot of attention, which is okay, but this is the latest, most current national safety standard, the ambulance will be built to the latest standard, which includes airbags in the rear part of the ambulance to protect the EMTs. And if you think about it, EMTs, they're riding sidewalks. So, if you think about the normal dynamics of a bad event, a crash would happen involving an ambulance, EMTs are injured at a very, very high rate in crash situations, and usually very, very seriously. So, the manufacturer we're going with is the only one that actually has an airbag system now that protects our EMTs, so.
Yeah, and I want to add to that, I think it's real important to do so, is that I think that's very important. Our department, fire department, fire and EMS, they do everything they possibly can to keep a patient safe from harm, yet if we can't do that for our EMTs, you know, what are we saying to them? So, I think it's, bless you, very important that we at least provide some safety measures to our volunteers. So, I was real glad about that.
And again, as some of you know, I mean, this was a very collaborative effort. We had a team of people that worked on the design and development of it and the proposal, and they did an amazing job. So, that's a very, very positive thing. And then, the district, because we now have personnel in the building overnight, they're required to add fire sprinklers for the living areas of the building. And for those who are familiar with how critical fire sprinklers are, the Volunteer Association stepped up and made a very significant donation so that instead of just sprinklering the dorm areas of the building, which was the minimum requirement, we're going to sprinkle the entire building, all living areas, all office areas, and the apparatus bay. And again, wouldn't assume that this group would do this all that often, but if you go out and you study fires in fire stations across the country, the vast majority of them actually start in the apparatus bay, the electronics and all the, you know, the battery charging systems and everything that's out there, and then it obviously impacts the living areas. So, we will not only have a compliant building by doing the living areas, but we will have a fully sprinkled fire station, which I think is a tremendous step forward. And then, the association, the district is paying about $7,000 for the portion that was required. The association is paying an additional $21,000 than to sprinkle the entire rest of the building. So, a very, very nice effort by the association.
And it's also upsized for additional expansion that may happen on north side of the building.
Yeah, and this is another, it's just beyond me, that here we're talking, our fire department, and they make sure that all of the other buildings and everybody, our residents in town are adequately staffed, if you will, for the sprinkler systems for their own safety, and we haven't had that in our own fire department. I mean, that just, that just blows my mind. So, this too, I think, shows that we really care about the volunteers and their safety, whether they're just there working, or they're staying the night, or whatever. I just think it's a great thing, and the department and the district were not, would not have been able to do that without the help of the Volunteer Association, so kudos to them.
And then, a couple of, I think, really cool things. We, oh, the interstate, and you're well aware of what's going on out there, Department of Transportation has been very open with us about what they expect this summer to be like because of the way the configuration is, and they have pretty good predictive models as to, you know, activity when you configure roads in certain ways. The difficulty is the Jersey barriers, the fact that the traffic has now got concrete barriers on both sides of them, on both lanes, which basically means we can't get to the scene of something when it goes wrong. The cars in front of us have no place to go to get out of the way. So, we've been working together with Stoughton, Cambridge, obviously Edgerton, Milton, Janesville, and Deloitte. All the fire departments have been meeting together, and we've come up with a reasonably elaborate sort of response plan where we're going to work together. So, wherever the incident is, we're going to have multiple departments coming from different directions so that the first one that can get there, nobody really cares that it says Edgerton on the side of the truck or Cambridge, right? I mean, if they're having a bad day, they just want an ambulance and some fire trucks there that can help them. So, a lot of really good planning between all the departments up and down the interstate to try and be able to deal with that all summer long. And then, as I said to Candy, sort of take this as a tongue-in-cheek comment, we have a huge problem right now. We actually, we have seven new members of the department over the last month, and thank you, Tom, for all the background work that they do on new candidates, but we're starting to get new people into the department.
Good problem to have.
Yeah, big problem to have. Three of those individuals are fire certified, four of them are EMS certified, and of those, two of them actually want to get the other certification as well. So, it's a good problem to have, we're going to be busy doing a lot of training this summer and a few things like that, but we're starting to make some progress.
And then, yeah, I think those were the only things, yeah. So, you covered much more than I would have, but that's excellent. Thank you very much, Randy.
And kudos to the current chairperson, which will be leaving.
Yes.
Dipold, he has done an excellent job as chairperson, pulling everything together with the chief and the board, and working with the fire officials and EMS crew. Reporter did a good job on the dynamics of everything, and he went through a lot with this transitional type stuff with the new chief and Candy, you, and then the board. So, he'd be, he did a good job, chairperson.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief, Candy, for the report, and that's it for the Fire District. We'll move on to Public Works.
Public Works met last Tuesday, April 25th. Pretty full agenda. We had approved and brought forward to the board the recommendation for the lawnmower, which we voted on previously, discussed the fixing of the sidewalk. Sidewalks, were they butt against the bridges? And basically recommending at some point that the city just make up the difference for those squares that are being caused by the bridges moving, not necessarily anything that has to do with the actual sidewalk. Bridges are basically on footings, and the sidewalk is a little bit different structured. Also, voted to restrict parking on the Spencer Street from the highway to the curve. Quite a bit of discussion on that, but that was a difficult decision, but we did that, recommended that. And then, we discussed bringing back the noon whistle, which was basically just a discussion. So, at this point, that'll probably be popping up again sometime.
Thank you. Okay, Plan Commission. There are a couple of things we have to take action on.
I will take care of that. I make a motion to approve the preliminary one-lot certified survey for 1108 Blaine Street with Plan Commission's conditions.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Oops.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt City of Edgerton Resolution 1217, approve final one-lot certified survey map for 1108 Blaine Street.
I'll second.
Any discussion? None, roll call.
Wellnuts? Wellnuts?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Veteran Resolution 1117, support of DOT funding a mass transit program in the state's budget.
Second. That's a next one, but that's not in planning, but that's okay. We gotta do that now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any discussion?
Right.
Hey, you want to read it? No, we don't, we don't need to.
I don't care.
We don't need to read it. Just depends on what it is.
Sounded familiar to me, so I thought it was part of the plan, the planning.
See, any other discussion on this?
I'm going through a six-week budget deliberations on mass transportation and it's, there's a lot of components to this transportation fund, budget bill, borrowing versus raising the tax, gas tax and, you know, all sorts of things. So I hope that this element stays in there.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have on planning, and that number eight also.
Thanks. Well, thanks for coming down tonight. I know you're not feeling good.
Yeah, no problem.
Mayor, all the persons in the staff reports, I'm going to let the police chief take the first one here.
The Saturday was the drug roundup that we've been advertising in the health of Edgerton. Edgerton, we turned in 320 pounds.
Do you know how many pounds of sharps there were, containers?
The sharps, containers, there were all other animals, I think we've got mostly five garbage bins.
There had to be, yeah, when I left it.
That's another animal, but that'll be taken care of. The pharmacy was taken care of, it'll be taken care of those and then here in the future they'll be dropped, point, four sharps, so if they can figure those, instead of saving them for this.
And they also have containers available at the pharmacy that you can bring back.
Probably, once they get the new building, it'll be taken care of.
I think that was one of the things that people really saw the opportunity to get rid of some stuff that they've had for a long time because there was some that brought many containers in with dust just about as thick as the container on them. So they've been there for a while, it's a hard thing to dispose of.
The lockbox in the lobby, that's probably empty every week, ten days.
Yeah, when I was there, I was amazed at what was being dropped off there and all the containers being filled. And like I said, the older prescription bottles, some were dated, you know, just older in the hills, you know, so it was a very good thing.
One other thing, Police Memorial Day is May 15th, which is our next council meeting, and that is the start of Police Week also. Anybody else have anything?
So.
And that's, that's a Wednesday, yeah, that's a Wednesday, yeah, that's a Wednesday. We got planning that night.
Well, I have nothing to report, but I have more of a question or a comment of future reporting with the DOT and the changes in the interstate. When do we anticipate some of that traffic having to be coming through Edgerton? And at what point do we need, as a council, need to be made where, when that's going to happen? What are maybe potential items or issues or do we need updates at council meetings on how things are going? I just think it would be good to be updated on that.
Do you notice all the different things, particularly on the bridges, you know, and the traffic will be routed through town, but that will be overnight?
Oh, it'll just be an overnight?
Unless there's an incident out there.
Yeah, there are data.
It'll be nighttime.
Oh, okay, so nothing during the day that we're worrying about this year, this summer?
I'm not worried about any of it.
Well, Tom, I know, let me, let me rephrase that. Aside from chief, I mean, is there anything throughout the summer that, or traffic is going to be coming through town in the middle of the day or on weekends?
Nothing planned, but that's maybe with those of the bad guys, one of the around plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if there's an incident, okay, but nothing like traffic flow is going to be diverted and detoured through town?
Randy can probably agree to any incident out there now.
Sure.
Because a minor fender bender is going to bring us heavy traffic versus a major incident.
Right, okay, that's fine.
Was it like last March time, we had a traffic accident or something on the interstate and the traffic went through town about two, three hours?
No, that's absolutely fine. I was under the impression that because of the work and the bridge work, that traffic would be routed through town for a period of time. So, good to know.
The night flow, because the interstate is closing, they're shutting the interstate off completely.
Like from 10 at night till 5:00 in the morning or something like that? Okay, perfect, thank you.
I have a couple of things if I could. First, I'd like to ask that the mayor discuss with Jonathan Frye his situation with his attendance. I personally feel that if a person is not willing or unable to attend meetings, he should possibly resign to allow somebody else to fill the position to attend meetings and take care of business. And secondly, I would like to ask that if we can get an update in a future, a future meeting regarding where we're at with getting our money refunded from the Harry Potter Festival people from last summer. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
motion to adjourn.